Seven o'clock, I will call the regular meeting of the Common Council of Stevens Point to order. Clerk Yentor, would you please call the roll?
Shore.
Here.
Keemer.
Here.
Zarazua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Slawinski.
Here.
Niebon.
Here.
Leek.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Fishler.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Everyone is present, so I would ask that you stand and join me in our salute to the flag. Those of you joining on Zoom, there should be a flag on your screen. If you have a lid on, remove it, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just a few opening comments that I wanted to talk to people about. First of all, I'd like to announce the retirement of Sharon Petoka. Sharon has been in our Assessor's office for about 23 years, and she has finally taken the plunge, and she will be retiring on Friday. Those of you who know her, certainly would be appropriate to drop her a line, congratulate her, wish her well. She's been with the Assessor's office, so congratulations to Sharon. I wanted to talk a little bit about public participation, because that seems to be at least a bit of a shortfall on our part as a city. We have done our best, over at least my administration, to get people informed on what's going on. If you want to know what's going on, I want to be able to provide a way for you to find out what's going on. Since I've been elected mayor, we have enhanced our cable access television channel. We have created a radio station, WWSP 105.9, that has our meetings and other pertinent information on it. We've beefed up our website, and by "we," when I say "we," I really mean John Quirk. But I'll take "we," I'll get some of the credit. And we've created a mobile app. So those people who choose to use their cellular device, or iPad, whatever, you have an option now to do that. We've created blogs. We've had each department run updates for their areas as frequently as possible. We have had social media presences, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. Not TikTok yet, but we're working on it. We've had regular meetings scheduled with the media. Most of the time, they keep it. There's two particular news sources in town, newspapers, or online or otherwise, that have not met with me over the past couple of months by their choice, but the options are there. We have video meetings. You know, Channel 7, Channel 9 are here. Channel 12 has been picking up stuff. And for the first time in, well, we've been doing it for a few years now, but prior to this, even the university wasn't notified of our meetings, our agendas, or anything going on in the city. We've reestablished the relationship with the Pointer, WWSP, and SPTV. So trying to get the word out has been paramount for not only me, but I believe I speak for everyone in the City Council and city staff. We want you to be aware of this, of what's going on. And I was saying that you don't even have to take a whole lot of responsibility, because you can go on our website and get notified of key words that pop up in our agendas. So for example, if Olive Garden is something that you're interested in, you can sign up for notices on any time the city agenda has the words Olive Garden in it. Or Roundabout, or Bike Lanes, or Red Lobster, or Weezer. You can get notifications. Now, I was told by someone tonight that they did it for two weeks and didn't work. But they never told anybody that it didn't work. We will be happy to walk you through whatever the issue is. If you have any concerns about not getting notifications, I had one today, says that our mobile app is a little cumbersome. I said, "Well, what was it?" And they said, "Well, everything's there. It's just hard to see on a little screen on a phone." I can't fix that. Get an iPad, get a computer. But outreach is something that we've tried very hard to do. And when someone says, "Oh, you should have sent everybody a letter," that is not practical. We don't have the funds or the staff to send a letter to every single household that might be interested in something we're talking about. With that being said, I'm still open to options. If there's a better way to get in touch with you, let me hear it. We're trying to get this better. That's our goal, and that's our goal with Business 51, too. Honestly, everything we do, nobody goes into any agenda item thinking, "Yeah, we're gonna really stick it to them this time." That doesn't happen. Everything we discuss is an attempt to make our community better. And many of you have already played a role in that by being here and participating. One other thing I wanted to touch on is training, because we don't get enough of that. And as elected officials, most of these people have day jobs or they're retired. Older persons don't get paid large amounts of money to deal with the things that they deal with. They do it because in their heart, they want to make the community better. And that doesn't mean my way. Everybody has their own idea of what's gonna make it better, but I can guarantee you that nobody sitting at this table ever says, "I wanna really screw with these people, so we're gonna do this." Nobody does that. But to help us along in the job, just like every one of your careers, we have training. And we have the League of Municipalities, the Wisconsin Municipalities, that offers training for older persons, for city attorneys, for treasurers, for mayors. All of those trainings are available to every single older person. Recently, we had some training that was identified as far as anti-harassment. And that was put on by our insurance company, specifically geared towards anti-harassment training for elected individuals. It's gonna be slightly different than it would be at maybe your business, or something like that. And that again, that training is open to every single older person. We had Keely Fishler, Ginger Keemer, Makira Zarazua, David Shore, Mary Niebon, and our city attorney Logan Beveridge, all attend that training. So I want to commend them for taking that training.
And Alder Dalton tried to.
And Alder Dalton tried to. Was there a problem?
The passport.
Okay. The point is, people are getting involved. They're trying to do what they need to do to serve you better. I hope you take that into account and try to do something that will serve the community better when we deal with things tonight. And then, I know John Miskowski's here, and he's gonna be talking about this a little bit from Wisconsin Public Television, but I'm gonna steal a little bit of his thunder and remind everybody that Wisconsin Public Television is having a premiere party. Create is helping out, I was just talking with Chris today. We are gonna have vendors there, we are gonna have historians. It's our town, hometown Stevens Point, is going to premiere October 7th in Pifner Pioneer Park at 7:00 PM, rain, shine, or otherwise, because I know our Pointers are diehard, and when it comes to learning something about their history, they'll be there. It might be a little chilly, so dress appropriately. But we'll have some vendors there, and John's gonna talk a little bit more about that in just a few minutes. But I wanted to make sure people understood that that was going on. All right, and with that, we will move on to persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item. Other than a public hearing, should register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the common council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by me. I don't believe we have any public hearings on the agenda tonight. So anybody who hasn't signed up yet, get to Sandy. Sandy, raise your hand one more time. If those are in the overflow room, come on into this room. And we'll get you identified and written on a piece of paper. Bob Ware, I see your hand. Go ahead and tell me which item you need to speak on, Bob.
Bob Ware, 727 Second Street. Item 6 and item 13 possibly. I'm not sure whether I'm gonna speak on 13.
Thank you. And I'll ask you to mute yourself until that time, sir. Perfect. Okay, and then we'll get Sandy to bring these up here. Lawrence, I see your hand as well. What item you wish to speak on, sir?
Yes, thank you. Item 6.
And we're still getting people signed up, so we're gonna be a little patient. I'm gonna ask again that everybody be patient. Tonight is larger-than-average for our meetings, and we appreciate that. But we're gonna need a little bit more patience tonight than normal.
Where do you find them items that they're talking about?
On the agenda. Negative. The agenda was available online. We didn't print copies, because you can see how thick it is. But if you have a phone, you can get it on your phone. I don't see you having one. If you, do you know what item you want to talk about, maybe the topic?
I just wanted to learn.
Oh, okay. Carrie, do we have any extra copies of these? I know there's some directors sitting in the director's lounge. Could I get one of the directors to maybe make some photocopies of just the agenda pages, so the first four sides? Maybe a dozen copies, and bring them in here, please. All right, Sandy, do you have the sheets? Do we have anybody to speak on item number 4?
Well, Mayor, I'd also like to add that they do have Wi-Fi here. So if someone wants to go into the Wi-Fi, they'd be able to download the agenda and everything else. And the Wi-Fi works pretty quick.
Sandy, are these in the order? Thank you. That's the most speakers we've had since Sandy got hired in January. So thank you. Okay. And yes, there is public Wi-Fi available if you don't have cellular service in here. All right, so item number 4 is persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item. This is something we have on every single council agenda. So if you want to talk about something, or let us know about something, and you can't make a phone call to your alder, or email your alder, or call my office, or City Hall, you still have the ability in front of everybody to stand up and talk for up to three minutes about any item that we haven't had on agenda. And we have two of those tonight. The first one is gonna be item number, I'm sorry, item number 4 is Tori Jennings, former First District Alder Person. So Alder, or former Alder Jennings. I'll have you come to the lectern, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Tori Jennings, 719 Greenbrier. Last month, I resigned from City Council and no longer represent the First District. This decision was difficult to make and not one that I took lightly. Serving on City Council for the past four-plus years has been both an honor and a privilege. I am immensely grateful for the support I received from neighbors through three elections. Even though I will not complete my third term as First District Alder, I trust our City Council to make prudent decisions about appointing or selecting my replacement. Among the things I will remember most about serving the First District is meeting neighbors who shared stories about growing up in Stevens Point. Or entrepreneurs who shared their dream about a new business and a vision for the future of Stevens Point. I enjoyed solving problems for constituents whenever possible, and I will miss walking the First District to deliver my newsletters, answer questions, and offer assistance. Because elders serve not only their district, but also the city as a whole, I am aware that decisions I made during meetings did not always align with the opinion of some individuals. That said, I have done my best to make informed choices based on staff expertise, research, and the economic needs of our community as a whole. I am proud to have been part of a council majority that has been resolute about moving Stevens Point forward in the areas of infill redevelopment and transportation. City Council has made it a priority to reverse the blight of Division Street and improve the economic vitality and aesthetics of this important corridor. I am grateful for the strength of leadership shown by members of this council and our council president, and I hope to see that leadership tonight. I remain committed to the projects I am most passionate about and will continue working towards their successful completion. I will continue my extensive volunteer efforts in Stevens Point and Portage County, and am planning philanthropic goals in collaboration with a community foundation of central Wisconsin. I wish the city well and trust the next First District Alder will serve the district and city with thoughtful decision-making and kindness. Thank you all, good luck.
Thank you. And for some further information, Alder Jennings did serve a significant period of time on behalf of the constituents in her district, and we presented her with a plaque, I presented her with a plaque earlier this evening, recognizing that, because every alderperson who's up here, who's ever served, knows that it is very much a thankless job. So we appreciate those people who do take it upon themselves to get involved and commit themselves to serving. Next up, we have Shelley Bank, 1430 Torren Road. Bunk? Oh, sorry.
That's fine. Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Shelley Bunk. I'm a seven-year legal resident who owns my own trailer, living in the, residing in the Four Seasons Trailer Court on Torren Road. There are 25 other legal residents of the Trailer Court, all of whom have resided there for a period of four years to over 20 years. All of us, except for two to three residents, own our own trailers. Three-quarters of us are elderly or disabled, living on fixed incomes. Christopher Reeves took over in 2017, and it has been a nightmare ever since. He completely abandoned the residents in 2018. We have had to deal with all the issues happening on our own since, as there is entirely no communication from Reeves. We have been invaded by eight trailers worth of squatters. There are multiple felonies in each of their pasts. They have been responsible for the vandalism, the thefts, and the excessive drug problem now prevalent in our community. We not only must put up with all their illegal activities, but we also are being mentally, emotionally, and physically abused by these squatters. There have been threats to us, whether yielding of pistols, threats against our personal safety, threatening to kill us and/or pets, our pets. There is a female squatter that is trying to take over the managing of the Trailer Court. She continually mows all of our yards without our permission, destroying a great many of our personal properties. She has installed a friend of hers as the new manager, and they have both breached the office trailer, assessing our records. They have taken our personal information out of the office trailer, doing who-knows-what with our personal information, including our social security numbers. I've had to get a restraining order against this woman, as she has threatened me and my dog's lives, for which she completely thumbs her nose at the restraining order. Christopher Reeves is completely noncompliant in helping us. I am begging you, on behalf of the remaining 25 legal residents, to help us. We are not only have the trauma of fearing for our safety from these law-breaking squatters, but we also have to deal with being abandoned by Christopher Reeves. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm hoping that we can get the help we so desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shelley.
Thank you.
And that exhausts the speakers for item number 4.
Can I sign up for non-agenda items?
I don't see your name here. Hang on one second.
I just put it underneath. Number 14, I have to say she's...
All right, sir, it's gonna take a while to find it. So just come on up and name an address for the record. That's this one?
No, that's...
Oh, that's Joel?
Thank you. Keith Kudrowski, 1536 Water Street. Home of another one of the beautiful Bike Lanes that kinda destroys my road. Anyhow, a couple of my wishlist here, kinda relates back to what's gonna be done later tonight. Street signs, print's too small. Back probably should be Braille for the deaf people. Water Street Tower. What about Pointers, Cardinals, Panthers? Looks prettier. Wishlist expensive stuff, does nothing. Turtle sign on Pat Street, way too high for the turtles. Way too high. I like bluegrass on Gerky Field. Surely that doesn't cost that much to do, right? Anyhow, relating back to this, yeah, this stuff's all pretty stupid, and it's pretty non-functional. Very much to what item 14 is to this city. One lane doesn't flow like two lanes. So I'll be back for item 14, thanks.
Thank you. Did I miss anybody else on the non-agenda? I did find yours, by the way. It was filed under 14 instead of 4 and 14, but that's okay. We got you in, thank you. Anyone else that we may have missed? Okay, the police chief, I saw him pop in earlier. He did get some printed copies of agendas. So if you want the agendas, doesn't have any background or supporting information. But if you need a copy of the agenda, they're in here at the table, and Sandy can hand those out to you. Moving along, item number 5 is a presentation to the mayor, council, and citizens from John Miskowski. He's a friend of mine, he's also the executive director of Wisconsin Public Television, and he's gonna talk to us about hometown stories. And that's gonna be an episode, oops, you're moving around on me, John. Where'd you go? There he is. I'm gonna turn the host, hosting, over to you, John. You will have the hosting authority. And let me let this person in first. And then you'll need to turn it back over to me when you are done. So you are now host. And the floor is yours, sir. Tell us about what's cool.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike, and thanks for giving us a little time to share this great project. I'm trusting people can hear me, or you'll chat and yell at me if you can. So let me extend a thanks to the community. About two years ago, we started a conversation with the intent of doing a documentary history of Stevens Point. And now COVID made that a little complicated, but everywhere we turned, we had such enthusiasm and great response, sharing photos, video, stories along the way. So I wanted to take this time to give you all a sneak preview. I know I've had a allotment here, about 10 minutes, so I think we can do that, and you can cut me off anytime you need to. I can do that, too. So first of all, I again, thank everybody. I'm gonna show you a couple things. Understanding in the Zoom world, sometimes videos can fail, they can be choppy, sometimes the audio doesn't work. If it doesn't work, we won't worry about it too much, because each of these videos is about a minute long. So just want you to get a look at it, get a feel for it. And as Mike said, we want you to join us. So I'm gonna share my screen. And there, hopefully you see this event that we have coming up in a couple weeks. So we're, as Mike said, whatever the weather is, we're gonna meet at Pifner Park for the first premiere screening of this documentary history. And I thought I'd give you a little preview tonight and encourage you to share this with friends. So I'll give you a little rundown of the show and show a little video, a few minute pieces here and there. So the program opens a little bit with the Menominee presence in the area. David Greeno from Menominee shared his story of why this area is important to the Menominee, and a really good thing for us to understand of that presence. So we'll take a shot here and play the video. Hopefully you can hear it. Again, these are all about a minute or a minute and a half, and so we'll just go through a few videos for you.
Doesn't look like we have audio, John, so maybe I'll just... Dun 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 dun. Dun 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 dun. In a time where, I don't know, the Wisconsin River...
So you didn't hear that? You couldn't hear it?
We can't hear any of the audio.
Okay, but you can hear me.
I can hear you, so you're the narrator now, John.
Okay. So that little is David Greeno, you saw a little clip. And I'm just gonna look here and see what we have for audio to see if I possibly have messed up here with what we're sharing. Okay, well, let's just keep going through the images here, and I'll just go through the chapters. I know you have a sense of, you have a good bit to talk about today. The video I was gonna share with you, so the, let's just go back. After that introduction, one of the chapters about Polish settlement. So really, really powerful stories of what brought people to this area and these traditions, including this video, which I'll just skip past the video here. There is a really nice, lovely tour of St. Peter's Church. Talks about Buchholz lending his support to building the church, and folks talking about their families to help build the church, including Dorothy's Moot is really great to hear again, talking about her father working on the project. So we'll just kinda work through those videos. Actually, that one, let me show you that one. I think there's very little audio on there, but you just get me reminded of the beauty of that church. So I can hear the narration, I understand you can't. So just is a little tour of St. Peter's Church and how the Polish community is so connected through the church. That's a Buchholz who we learn a little bit in the show about Lullaby and things like that. Dorothy's Moot is on here, she's talking about her father building the altars and how the community built this beautiful place. So Dorothy right now is talking about, what a great face. She's talking about moving to Milwaukee. Folks know that when she graduated from high school, she was Rosie the Riveter, another Rosie the Riveter, and she went to Milwaukee and, no, my thing stuck. She went to Milwaukee, but she said when she got to Milwaukee, people said, "Do you know about that beautiful church in Stevens Point?" The next chapter about Point Beer and that history. Another chapter about reinvention. This comes out of Stevens Point being another Wisconsin lumber town. It tells the story of Lullaby, tells the story of furniture manufacturing, which we know through Jerns, Vetters. Also references here to Century Insurance and UWSP. I think one of the things we see that's really important for communities is that reinvention. And what we see in Stevens Point is really a lot of communities that kind of fell apart after lumber went away or became very small. Stevens Point is a community that continued to thrive because of that diversification. Keep me moving on. One thing that really struck us was this great tradition in Stevens Point of fly tying. So the next chapter is a biography of Carrie Frost, of her creating frost flies and really kind of the industry of tie-flying in Stevens Point and the area. And it's a really wonderful story. I also want to let you know that for this project, we also created a biography of Carrie Frost for 4th, 5th graders across Wisconsin. So teachers across the state are using her story about a woman who broke the mold, who started her own business, who employed women in this industry to learn about innovation, to learn about entrepreneurship, to learn about people breaking the mold. So that we're really happy out of this project. We brought new resources to schools across the state. And then the documentary also tells that story as well, leading into the other sort of tackle and tie-fly industry of Weber and the other companies in the area. The next chapter is, as you can imagine, is about irrigation. It's about potato, it's about the golden stands. Also, some connection there to UWSP, issues of water quality and concern, and how UWSP was part of that story as well. So really great stories about that innovation of irrigation and potato farming. And then finally, these issues, one thing we saw in the making of the documentary was really this combination of real strong interest in the environment and importance of water. That scene at UWSP with the Natural Resources Program, that scene in the building of the parks, especially in Iverson, folks recognizing very early discovering that aquifer, which is, makes it, makes our city, the city, the city of wonderful waters, of building that park around that to protect the aquifer. The Green Circle Trail, you all know about. Also, you know, so much of this community, these stories revolve around water and clean water and that interest. So this kind of wraps that up and defines the city. I had a little story here about Pocah, just a real short thing, without the music. That's not gonna be as interesting. Pocah's more fun, but we'll show you a little video. Sorry if you can't hear it. Sounds really good to me. Sounds really good to me. But I thought I saw one of my cousins in this clip, and I thought I saw him, but he was dancing with someone else. So I'm a little weary about this video. May need to fix this. So it's just some nice images there. I'm sorry you're not hearing it. But you can hear the Stevens Point poca. I can hear it in the background. And you're seeing some familiar faces who are sharing their stories and the traditions of poca. So I'll stop there since you're not hearing it. They're great fun, and we're going to see all of it on Thursday, October 7th at 7:00. We invite you to join us and to share, share that with friends and encourage everybody to come out and have a good time. And so we'll, we're working on, as Mayor said, with hopefully some food trucks and some music and other things like that. So I just wanted to give you a tease of what that project is going to be like and thank everybody for their participation and support and help through, along the way. It takes a lot of people to put something like this together to get access to the stories, the information. Even sometimes the simple thing is getting in a building gets complicated. So I want to thank everybody for that. And thank you for supporting PBS Wisconsin. All right, that's my presentation. I'm sorry it came with no audio. We will have audio on our event in October.
Thank you very much, John. So you know, this is one of those things that I know we can all get behind. If you're interested in history or finding out anything about Stevens Point. So again, that's Thursday, October 7th, 7:00 PM at the Bandshells in Pifner Pioneer Park. I know we've got, Wazella Publishing is going to be there to talk about their early years, The Worth Company, Point Brewery, of course. I believe they're going to have some of their wares to try, if you're into that sort of thing. And then if you can't make it for some reason, again, this is rain or shine, it will be airing on PBS Wisconsin on Monday, October 25th at 8:00 PM on Wisconsin Public Television. So John had challenged me at one of the premieres when we were going over this to take a card and let two or three people know. So I think I've kicked butt pretty good on that by letting all of you know. I would challenge each and every one of you to let two or three people know about the event at Pifner Pioneer Park on October 7th. Thank you very much, John. I appreciate it. And we'll see you soon.
Let me add one thing?
Yes.
Let me add one thing. I did not curse. I followed your rules. That's unusual for me. More important, also on the 25th, that the program will be available streaming. So we know this can be something that people across the country, the world, that your connections won't want to know. So look for that and will, they'll all be able to see it online as well.
Thank you, John. But I did hear at least one tie flying. That's John's thing. It's tie flying. All right. So thank you again, John. Now, we will move on to our business. And the first item on the agenda, our consent agenda, number six. We had a few people that wanted to speak on this, but Alder Leek, I understand you want to pull at least one item.
Yes, under Plan Commission, point six under Planning Commission.
You just lost everybody.
Yeah.
Whoa, what happened?
I think you forgot which house.
Oh, he was home.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Killing me. Thank you for letting me know. I apologize. We did not expect that. John is going to get a butt whooping. I thought he turned it back over to me. So we're going to, we're going to get everybody back in. Just need a little more patience. Sorry. Thank you for letting me know because I was looking at the agenda.
You're welcome.
Couldn't go easy. No, that's too much. We had a fair amount of people, too. So I'm going to, I'm going to take some liberties here. So yes, if you need to use the restroom, they're right across the hall. And that goes for anything, anytime, anyone. To go to the bathroom? No. But please do not do it in your seat. At the very least, leave the room. Thanks, Keely. Didn't you do the?
No.
Somebody did, though. Sean? Thanks, Sean. I knew it came from over there somewhere. What do they call it, a rim shot? Few more here. Bob, you've got your hand up again? Do you need something?
I got knocked off somehow.
You're back on. We see you. I'm going to lower your hand then. Thank you.
Are we still on item six?
We haven't even gotten to item six yet.
All right.
Thank you. All right. So item number six, from item number six, which would be the Plan Commission's request for Matt Dishar for an exception to a driveway requirement at 517 Indiana Avenue. Is that correct, Alder Person Leek?
That is correct.
We're going to pull that for further discussion. Is there anything else that Alder Persons wish right now to pull for further discussion? Okay, before we bring it to the floor, I need a motion. Okay? A motion and a second. Right. Sorry, was that President Johnson and then Aldous Lewinsky? With item number six from the Plan Commission Agenda pulled for further discussion, we did have two people that wanted to, three people, four people. We have a few people that want to speak on this. So I will continue to monitor those entering, and we will turn it over to Bob Ware. Bob Ware, you had a comment on the consent agenda. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, this is Bob Ware against 727 Second Street. I want to embellish, I guess, on what you had said earlier in the meeting, Mr. Mayor, regarding informing the public on what's going on in city government. The enterprise commissions, transportation, airport, and water and sewer.
Bob, which item are you speaking to on the consent agenda?
Well, specifically, the, the three items. There was an item there for the Water and Sewer Department.
Okay.
One, one for the airport and the Transportation Commission.
Okay, so you're going to talk about those agenda items?
Yes.
Go ahead. Sorry.
The, what, what, what the public can see on, on the city's website is only the agendas. They don't, they have not been publishing, or at least providing for the citizens, the backup information. So the only thing that the members of the public can see are the agenda itself and then the minutes, the next month, once the minutes have been approved. But the backup stuff, the bills that are paid and so forth, is just an item on their minutes and during their meeting that they approve X number of dollars. But there's no breakout provided to the public. And that's something that I've addressed to you a couple of times on emails, I guess most recently about a year ago. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have Lawrence Levitin.
Hi, I'm sorry, Mayor. I wanted to speak to item 14 and not six, so I withdraw that request.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I got that a little bit wrong. We will put that on here. Okay, we do have a few people in the audience. Craig Tesh. And for those of you attending in person, we need you at the lectern so the microphone gets picked up and you get to see your smiling face on camera.
I was going to say, don't do that to me.
You had a couple of items under number six, so go ahead and.
Yeah, the first one was number five. When I was at the Finance Committee meeting last, I think it was last Thursday, I told you about that sunburst that I had that looks like somebody had took a bite out of it. And the only reason I mention it is because, you know, it's, it's, it's an older tree, has a shortened life. Of course, it shortens the lifespan. And I mean, I was glad to hear that there is a, an expert in forestry here, but there was no way that anybody knows to contact that particular person. There should be some way that that, you know, it's made more known to people. Because every so many years, they come by and they cut a little bit more out of it. And it's, it's really, it's a beautiful tree. The other thing is item eight. And I'm going to go a little bit more on this one. If you, if you go by my address, which by the way is Craig R. Tesh, 1100 Front Neck here in Stevens Point, you'll notice, you'll notice that there's a 100-foot sidewalk on the side, on the Sim side lined with weeds. And it hurts us a little bit because, of course, we spent a lot of time fixing up that lawn. Joel Summers, if anybody remembers Joel Summers, we worked with him. We actually did the planting and that, but we got the stuff from him. He did the original leveling. But there's no, there's no school route there, and nobody really uses it. It cost us $2,365 with interest. And because we're in our mid-70s, of course, with health problems, both myself and my wife, we live on a corner lot. We also have to pay somebody else to plow it in the wintertime. So before you vote, I guess, I did admit, I may not, it wasn't that clear to me, I don't think, what's going on with this. So I got to ask you first. Is it, does this mean that all charges from herefore, here to fore, are now going to be spread out over all the taxpayers whenever you have sidewalk continuation or sidewalk repair versus before when individuals were paying for it by themselves?
Generally, sir, yes.
That is correct. Okay. So I guess, I guess then that this becomes my problem. Because first of all, we paid these dollars. We paid this, this $2,365 with interest. We're, you know, in this particular regard. And I'm wondering, for all the people, and it's not just us, that have over these last two years paid all, you know, paid these amounts and everything else. And now, not only do we sacrifice that, but we also, at the same particular note, we also have to pay for everybody else's as it comes along because of increase in taxes. And I want to know, before we vote on this, what everybody has, I mean, do you think that that's fair? Do you think that that's fair? That we paid all that extra money?
Me personally, sir, I do not. However, that, that's up to the council to decide. And I can tell you that that was a concern that was brought up. Normally, we wouldn't engage in this sort of discussion, but I feel it's important that you get some answers.
I think I got my three minutes is still not up.
No, your three minutes was up. That was the beep. But I'm going to tell you very quickly that we've talked about it, and we are trying to sort through some of those hurdles. The other option is, you know, nonprofits that don't pay taxes. Do we special assess them? I would ask, sir, like I asked you last week with the City Forester, can you give me a call tomorrow and we can talk online about this? I would be happy to.
Yeah, I can do that.
Take some time and answer your questions, but we've got 100 people here.
No, I understand. But, you know, I think there's a lot of people here. I don't know why they came, back in 2013, 2014, I was the only one here talking about because I've got a business down on Highway 51. And I was the only one here a couple times. So I'm glad to see that a lot of other people here for the same thing.
Me, too.
All right.
Thanks, Craig. I'll look forward to your call tomorrow. All right. That exhausts our speaker list on the items other than item number six from the Plan Commission Agenda. So I will now call the vote. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed will vote no. And the clerk will call that roll.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Sarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewinsky.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Bischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That passes. Item number six from the Plan Commission's Agenda, number six. I'm sorry, that is approved. Item number six is a request from Matt Dishar for an exception to the driveway requirements at 517 Indiana Avenue with the parcel identified in your packet. Alder Leek, you pulled it, so I would ask if you have any comments first. Otherwise, we need a motion.
Well, yes, before motion, Mr. Dishar was working with city staff to, on an exception for his driveway. And I'm not sure if he's here tonight.
He is. He signed up to speak.
Oh, he signed up to speak.
But we need a motion first.
Oh, okay. Well, then I'll move to reconsider.
Not reconsider. You're looking to grant the exception.
Grant the exception to Mr. Dishar of 517 Indiana Avenue.
Thank you. We need a second.
I'll second it for the sake of discussion.
Seconded by President Johnson for discussion. Vinnie, I'm going to mute you. All right, Mr. Dishar. There he is.
I am trying to expand my driveway report, expand it to keep it short. Basically, going to be trying to go four inches or four feet wider than is allowed. So 24 feet at the sidewalk. I'd like to go to 27, three feet. Also, the plane, you can only go three feet from the plane in your house. Going to extend past that as well. The options that were given to me by the zoning was to mainly park next to my garage. I can pour concrete next to my garage, to park next to my garage, but I'd rather just have it in the driveway. Looking for expansion now because we have three vehicles due to my work. And in 10 years, I'm going to have two drivers at home, two extras.
Okay, any other comments from the council? Alder Shore? And then we'll go to Alder Morrow.
Thanks. Do we have a staff recommendation on this?
We do. And the recommendation was to deny at Plan Commission. The vote at Plan Commission, I believe, was also to deny the exception.
Yes, and Plan Commission was working on sort of a skeleton crew. So at the time.
That's right. There were, so I, I was out at Plan Commission, and there were four people there, which was enough for a quorum, but it did not include the entire Plan Commission. Do you have, you want to recap? Alder, Director Kornoski is on via Zoom on vacation. The foothills of the Smoky Mountains. And I can ask Director Kornoski to give us a summary. Or we have our associate planner, Adam Kuhn. Adam or Ryan, can one of you provide a summary of what happened at Plan Commission in regards to this item?
Sure. More than happy to, Mayor and members of the council. Mr. Dishar has asked for an exception to the city's driveway regulations. City staff has been working with Mr. Dishar. We've provided alternatives that would meet the code and more or less advise Mr. Dishar that staff's recommendation of Plan Commission be denied because there are alternatives that we believe could fit within the footprint of his existing property to meet the code and not have to go through the exemption process. We don't believe that his property meets the exception requirements as outlined within the Plan Commission packet. So recommendation by the Plan Commission was to, was to deny staff's recommendation as to deny at this time. I would just advise the council that this is not the time to be regulating, you know, 27 or 26 feet. This should be an up or down vote at this time.
Thank you, Director. Any further questions? Alder Shore, you good? Alder Morrow.
I'm good.
Anyone else? The motion before you is to grant the exception. If you are in favor of granting the exception, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
No.
Bischler.
No.
Dalton.
No.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
No.
Lewinsky.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Sarazua.
No.
Keemer.
No.
Shore.
No.
Nine, one, I'm sorry, one, nine?
Eight.
Two.
Eight.
Two.
Two? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Wasn't paying attention. My fault. Eight, two. The motion is denied, but we do now need a motion to uphold, I believe, the action of the Plan Commission meeting. Alder Person Niebone.
I will move to uphold the action of the Plan Commission meeting.
In regards to the.
In regard to the.
Driveway at 517.
Driveway at 517 Indiana.
Thank you. Sir, second? Seconded by President Johnson. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Actually, I was, I am a member of the Plan Commission. I did drive over and look at the individual's property. I noticed that he had three vehicles in the driveway and stuff in the garage, so he couldn't get the cars in the garage. We also just made overnight parking free on the street. There were alternatives presented to the individual by staff, and he chose to ignore There were alternatives presented to the individual by staff, and he chose to ignore those recommendations. He could very easily put in a flare, and that goes along with the driveway regulations that we just recently, as a body, changed. So there was a reason that this was denied at plan, so...
Thank you, and just for clarification, nobody ignored anything, it was a request.
Yes.
All right. If you are in favor of upholding the Plan Commission and denying the request, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
No.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Okay, that is an eight, 10? Nine, one? Jesus, come on, Mike. All right, sorry. We don't even have 11 people a year, I know, yes, yes. I got it, thank you. The motion is upheld and approved. Item number seven is a resolution, it's a request from Heidi Oberstadt for a conditional use permit to construct a detached garage at 524 Buchholz Avenue with parcel identified using setback requirements of the traditional neighborhood overlay district consistent with Chapter 23.02 Sub 1 Sub H Sub 3. Need a motion. President Johnson?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Zarazua. I know the applicant is here for questions, but are there any questions or comments from the council? Okay, the motion before you is to approve. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
That is approved, thank you. Item number eight is a resolution, that's a request from Ronald Walters for a conditional use permit to operate a daycare facility at 4701 Industrial Park Road consistent with Chapter 23.02 Sub 3 Sub A Sub 3 Sub K. Need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Slawinski, seconded by?
I second.
Morrow. Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number nine is a request from Partners Pub, 2600 Stanley Street, for an extension to premises temporarily for the homecoming celebration on October... Did we bump something back there?
Oh, what a night.
Did we bump something? What happened?
You're awake.
All right, but I don't hear us through the speakers now. Can you hear? Okay, we're good. Maybe we should just wait on this item till after the Business 51. Rob, you okay with that? No, I'm kidding. So the homecoming celebration at Partners Pub, an annual event, October 9th, to include a fenced-in area that was outlined in the map in your packet, basically Partners is looking to do their homecoming event like they always do. Alder Shore.
I move approval of the extension of premises.
Thank you, is there a second? We'll go by Fishler. Any comments from the audience? I'm sorry, not the, council first. Jesus.
No cursing.
Okay, comments from the audience? That includes Zoom. Hearing none, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
That is approved. Item number 10 is a ordinance amendment, Chapter 24.27, the schedule of cash deposits for parking violations. And I have to give this person permission to record, and we are okay. A motion, please.
Motion to approve the slate of...
Moved by Johnson, seconded by Niebone. Comments from the audience? I thought you were all here for that one. Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And by unanimous consent, that is approved. As a reminder for all the persons, and I got this right from the attorney's mouth, since I state the motion, or state the item, you do not need to restate the motion as it is in your agenda, just a simple move approval, move denial, move to postpone, you don't need to restate the entire motion. Okay, item number 11 is to award the contract for the Fox Theatre Parking Lot Project to Wildcard Works for an amount not to exceed $52,868.95.
Alder Keemer, I'll move to approve.
Moved by Keemer.
Second.
Seconded by Morrow. Comments from the audience? And Zoom? Giving a little extra time just in case I hear rapid footsteps coming out of the overflow Hearing none, clerk enter, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Unanimous consent, that is approved. Item number 12 is to accept the ordinance amendment relating to 9.05 as it relates to parking. Alder Niebone?
So moved.
Thank you. Sir, second? Zarazua, seconds. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Including Zoom? Hearing none, another roll call, please.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Unanimous consent, that is approved. Item number 13 is to accept the ordinance amendment, Section 9.19, as it relates to ATV/UTV routes. Alder Slawinski, I'll need a motion first, and then we have some speakers.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second? Seconded by Shore. Okay, we have several speakers. I believe Bob Ware, you're on my list.
We're 727 Second Street. At the Public Works, there was some discussion about golf carts, and I stated that I thought it was in Chapter 17 of the ordinance. Actually, Chapter 16.11 of the city ordinance authorizes golf carts to be operated on North Reserve Street, Falcon Cove, Eagle Summit, all that area up to, I believe, the city's limits. It gives a feat, you know, a feat that limit on North Reserve, but it runs all the way up there. However, the golf carts, per the ordinance, have to have lights, they have to have directional signals, they have to yield to passengers and other motor vehicles, but it is certainly in the city ordinance, 16.11. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And we also have Lawrence, online.
Oh, is this in regards to the Business 51 corridor?
Negative, sir. You said item number 13, item number 13 is ATV/UTV routes. Are you looking at number 14?
He did say. 14, yes.
Did he? Really? It's my fault again. I apologize, Lawrence, that was on me again.
Gives me time to practice.
I apologize. All right, Nelson Gray, here in person? Does that rain? Sounds like rain.
Perfect timing. Can you hear me fine with a mask?
I believe so. How's the audio?
Good.
Good.
My name's Nelson Gray, I'm here to talk against the UTV/ATV route proposed. The concern is, is West River Drive has lots of different type of communities there. I happen to live on the northern section, the leg from double H to double H again on the west side. We have no through traffic. I can probably count on my hands how many cars we get of non-residents beyond buses, mail trucks, things like that. It's a very quiet street, there's no sidewalks, there's lots of people who walk. The Christian school actually brings 20 or 30 kids down our street to Mead Park, and this takes place with no sidewalks. In the wintertime, it's slippery, we're not even a tertiary route for plowing, we're probably a fifth or sixth order street. So it's packed snow, it's slippery, and a concern. I think when you look at this, you have to think about the residential situation, and I did take a look at the ordinances of many of the surrounding communities. Many of the surrounding communities are not like Stevens Point. They're more rural in nature, they have a setting that maybe is conducive and probably aligned with what the DOT wanted for farm sets, things like that. But to give you some facts, there's one house south of HH, there's 26 houses between HH and the railroad tracks, 26 houses again from the railroad tracks to 66 West Clark, and then there is 37 houses plus two more in Linwood from HH all the way around to HH again. We don't have through traffic, I mentioned that. So the concern is, it's 102 residential structures, they'll be impacted by this, potentially 204 household residents if you don't count kids based upon couples. So I'm just concerned with the negative impact on our community, a quiet street, our location. I do take some concern with a memo, it was brought up in spring about bar hopping or drinking, and yes, your memo does address, there are actually no bars on the Stevens Point route. Within a five-mile stretch, there are five bars from Linwood into Carlson. They can't, I don't want drunk people coming down my street on ATVs or UTVs. I know the time went off, so I'll wrap up. The common sense thing here is, if you don't want this type of traffic going down your neighborhood streets, then don't vote for it to go down my neighborhood streets.
Thank you.
Thank you, for your time.
Next up, we have Chrissy Pliska.
Thank you guys for your time tonight. I reside on the west side of Stevens Point, I was a former resident on West River Drive as well, so I can certainly understand that that road does have traffic on it. But I am a mom of twin nine-year-olds, and I can tell you, I advocated to get them opened in the town of Linwood, and seeing my daughter's excitement when our neighbors come by on an ATV, waving at them, excited to see the neighbors, it's one more reason that we can get outdoors and enjoy the outdoors. I have, my daughters have been riding in the UTV with my husband and I since they were three years old. As soon as they could hold a helmet on their head and safely do it, we've been out riding ATVs with my family. So I take safety very, very seriously. We bought car seats for in our UTV for them, we bought them proper helmets to wear, and it's a family, it's a family event that we can do outdoors. So I think, you know, in the last few years, obviously with COVID and not being able to do something, this is something that my kids enjoyed. Having life seemed normal. We could be outdoors and not have to be worried about everything that's happened in this last few years. So I understand that it is a residential area that we're asking to go through, but the opportunity to go in the UTV and fill it up with gas instead of putting that gas can in the back of my car and driving with my kids in the car, I don't think an ATV or a UTV is any more dangerous than a motorcycle, than a car, a semi, and I understand that accidents happen no matter what you're driving in, but I can tell you from my family alone, our very close friends that have ATV/UTVs, we take safety very, very, very important to us when we're getting out on the trails. So the opportunity for us to go to Rusty's doesn't mean that we're going there to consume alcoholic beverages, it means we're going there as a family. You can go there and get a soda pop, it's giving, giving back to our community and the businesses that are there. So since Highway 10 doesn't go through the store and mobile gas station, it's an opportunity for those businesses to have another opportunity to have customers come into their facility. So I ask that you guys consider, it's not that somebody is intending to go out on an ATV or a UTV and be reckless, you're going out to enjoy some family time. And I wish, I mean, obviously I knew there was going to be a lot of people here today, where I would have brought my daughters to let you guys see, they enjoy being on the ATV, they enjoy being on an UTV. So we wear our seat belts, we have our, you know, the lights, headlights, taillights, so, you know, we're making sure that anybody traveling behind us knows the direction that we plan to go. So it is something that can safely be done, and I will tell you, yes, there are some bad apples that, whether you're in a vehicle or a UTV, accidents can happen, but the majority of people are out there to enjoy nature, and that's just one more thing. So we ask that you guys go in favor of that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Tom Brown.
Evening. Hard to keep glasses on with this mask and I've got... Tom Brown, 317 Sixth Avenue, so I don't live on the west side, but I would like you to reject the ordinance amendment because there's a reason why there are city limit signs at the edges of Stevens Point. Stevens Point's a city, it's not a country town. ATVs have no purpose as vehicles to use our city streets, and West River Drive is a city street. Like most other city streets, it has many homes lining both sides, as you heard, but the only places there aren't homes are where the road is too close to the Wisconsin River, or there are some businesses, or where there are wetlands where there is no development allowed. Folks have chosen to live on the west side for a reason, it's pretty quiet, peaceful neighborhood, it's close to but apart from downtown. I would ask the older persons, the same question that was just asked, it's basically, if you don't think it's a good idea to have a noisy ATV running past your house back and forth at all hours, why would you make another neighborhood put up with it? So if it's not okay in your neighborhood, I would say, think about that. It doesn't really serve any useful city purpose, but does ruin a quiet neighborhood. So I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sally Tepinka.
My name's Sally Tepinka. I live at 732 West River Drive. I found out about this possibility on Friday night and I spent quite a few hours Saturday and Sunday canvassing my neighborhood, which I consider to be from the mobile station on Clark Street, down to the Dog Beach, down to the city limits on the northwest part of West River Drive. I talked to 17 households that I estimate have maybe quite about 28 people. And there was only one man who said, who was enthusiastic about this. And there was another man who said, well, I wouldn't oppose it if they follow all the laws and don't go out late at night. Everybody else was adamantly against it primarily, there were a number of reasons, but primarily for safety reasons. And I live on the stretch between the Dog Beach and the city limits. And as people say, it's quiet, but it's getting increasingly noisy. But the safety issues, I think if you have to picture this, because there are no sidewalks, this is what Mr. Gray was talking about, this is really a pedestrian pathway for the church and the daycare at the end. They, they spend a lot of time going on field trips to the park. Then when you get to the Dog Beach, because there are no sidewalks, the dogs jump out of the car, run around the street for a while before they decide they need to go swimming. And so they're in the street quite a bit. There's the park that has the disc golf course where I've had to stop more than once for people retrieving their discs that have overblown the park. And then you get to the baseball diamond, which in three, four months out of the year, people are unloading their kids and their equipment, their chairs and stuff going, using that. And then on top of that, and this is all good stuff, it's great, you know, it's nice. People use this neighborhood. There's the cash playground, but all that traffic gets routed to West River Drive to go out Clark Street because that's a one-way street. That, so I haven't even talked about the residents who live there and from my going door to door on West River Drive during, on that stretch. It is retired people and families with young children. And we have to use that if we want to walk anywhere, get some exercise, stroll with grandchildren, kids coming home. And I see this as very inappropriate for ATV and UTVs to be using that. And I agree with what the other speakers talked about, that there's reasons you live in the city and reasons you live in the country. And we all, we each have to give up things or pay more for whatever we're, where we're wanting to live. And I'm going to say it a third time, if you really think about having an ATV route feet or a few yards from your head when you're in bed or in your living room, if you don't want that, it really is not right to ask another tax-paying residential neighborhood to have that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Sandy Medine.
Thank you. Sandy Medine, 2101 West River Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to address number 13 with you. I'm here representing the residents of West River Drive. I'm here representing the runners, the walkers, the joggers, the bicyclists, the small children who get on and off the bus, who are not in favor of adding ATV or UTV traffic to West River Drive. I ask you that when it comes time to vote, to think about the safety of the residents, the runners, the walkers, the joggers, the bicyclists, and the small children getting on and off the bus, and vote no. I thank you.
Thank you. And we had ladies first, so Dave Medine, you're up next.
Thank you. I'm Dave Medine, 32-year resident of 2101 West River Drive. I raised my family there. That stretch of street is two and a half miles. It's a fairly long street. And it gets its share of traffic. I have had contact with about 80 of those residents fairly recently and over time. And I didn't get any vibes that this is really a good idea to make this the shortcut from the bars in Linwood to the bars in Carson, which is all this really is. And I think that was the impetus for this, this request. It sure seems to be that way from the people, from the neighbors that have responded to It's my understanding the proposal is to have West River Drive designated as the only city street specified for ATV, UTV use. And again, a shortcut from the bars in a rural area to another bars in the other, in another rural area. The neighbors I've talked to have concerns about safety under this proposal. The pavement's 22 feet wide, standard for a road, very narrow shoulders, so people who use the shoulders are really in the street inside of the white lines. It doesn't, right now, appear to be designed to accommodate the current amount of parked cars, bicyclists, pedestrians, joggers, neighborhood children, and the hot rodders who use West River Drive as a bypass. And there's a lot of those where they come down the hill, they're at 50 miles an hour. It's very difficult to police that entire two and a half mile stretch. There's really only one good spot for a squad car to be, right by the railroad tracks, which of course, everybody slows down at that particular moment, so they don't really get to see the speeders both north and south along that stretch. The neighbors believe that the addition of ATV, UTVs would put the street well beyond its capacity to carry traffic. So I am opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jan Nelson.
Thank you. My name is Jan Nelson. I live at 2021 Sleepy Hollow Road, Junction City, Wisconsin. That's about five miles northwest of Stevens Point on HH and then off on Sleepy Hollow Road. I've been an ATV year, UTV year for about the last six or seven years. I travel in many different areas throughout Wisconsin, South Dakota, Wyoming. It's a great family sport, as Chrissy had mentioned. And people have talked about, it's just for bar hopping. You know, I don't think you really know the whole facts about this, you know, and, and we have, I'm going to throw out a couple of numbers to you. 99%, 1%. And that 99% of the people actually follow the law, you know, observe speed limits and whatnot. And there's always that 1%. They could be in their diesel pickup truck that has 600 horsepower, weighs eight, 9,000 pounds. You know, there's that 1% and that could happen. There's a number of things with ATVs and UTVs. We have size limits, okay? My pickup truck is a little over seven feet wide. We have a work truck, it's eight foot two inches wide. Now, I've heard that West River Drive is kind of narrow. So maybe, well, for, for a fact, ATVs can be no wider than 50 inches. UTVs can be no wider than 65 inches in the state of Wisconsin. Our maximum allowable speed is 35 miles an hour. And I believe West River Drive in its entirety is rated at 25 miles an hour. Is that correct? Okay. So we can't go 35 on a UTV. We have to observe the posted speed limit. But our maximum speed out on HH, you know, is 35 miles an hour. So as far as being a, you know, over, you know, being crowded on the road, ATVs, UTVs would definitely seem to be a better mode of transportation than maybe pickup trucks, duallys, and bigger trucks. I did talk to a gal at the mayor's office in Mozenee today. Her name is Jane. Mozenee has had their city streets open, every street in, in Mozenee for approximately one year. And to the best of her knowledge, that they have had little to no problems with, you know, the use of ATV, UTVs in town. I realize Mozenee is a little bit smaller, well, quite a bit smaller than Stevens Point, but it still has a roundabout, you know, and, you know, I guess I'm not so sure if they have stoplights, but, you know, stop signs and stuff, multiple lanes. So very little, very little to no problems. So I guess please consider it. You know, we hear some bad things about UTV years, ATV years, but a lot of that may not be true. Many people can go to Rusty's, they can have a soda, they can have a fish fry, they can go through town, stop at the gas station, get fuel, ice, whatever they may need. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Olson.
Eric Olson, 2025 West River Drive. And I'm speaking today in opposition of this ordinance amendment. And it's, it's transportation night tonight, apparently, so let's talk a little bit about transportation. About 20 years ago, a little bit more than 20 years ago, the, the fine people of Portage County believed that they could get out ahead of the DOT and redesign Highway HH in such a way that it would lure the DOT to relocate Highway 10 to go on the HH corridor. And so they built a bridge. If you've ever crossed the HH Bridge, you might have asked yourself, this is a big bridge. Why did they build such a big bridge? The idea was that that was going to be Highway 10. It didn't happen, as you might notice, the real Highway 10 Bridge is even bigger to the north end of town. Ever since the HH Bridge was put in though, that has created an alternative way for people to get through, basically avoiding a stopped train on West River Drive and going on HH and proceeding on their way over on Water Street or on Division Street, Church Street. And so today, we have about 1,500 vehicles per day on West River Drive, which is more than what you would predict for sort of a street that doesn't really, it doesn't really go anywhere in the city, but people are using it as a way to get around the trains. When they do that, Portage County Councilmember Dave Medine undersold how they perform when they drive if they're frustrated that the train has slowed them down and they want to go back across HH. They, I live right on the street and I've been there now, working from home for a year and a half, they drive fast. They don't observe the 25 mile an hour speed limit. When they get right to HH, there's an interesting spot, if you've ever gone there, and I would encourage all of you, before you even think about this any further, to check out West River Drive. But just north of HH, there's a box culvert that takes in the wetlands behind the school and then brings that into the Wisconsin River. And at that box culvert, they have to put up guardrails on the road. There is zero shoulder, so that 20-foot pavement is pretty much it. There's no shoulder at all. There's no room for air, there's no room to go through. This road is just not a good place to be adding more motor vehicle traffic to a mix that already includes cars, delivery trucks, bicycles, pedestrians, joggers, et cetera. I would offer that if we wait long enough, State Highway 66, the traffic demand there is actually going to continue to decline as well. And the state is going to have a harder time justifying that this should even be a state highway. And at some point, we will have more county roads on the west side. And if you don't believe me, remember that HH north of Stevens Point used to be US Highway 10. It no longer is. It has a lot of right of way, it has huge shoulders, it's a road that can accommodate a lot of this type of traffic. A city street that was laid out over 100 years ago, right, to basically connect, basically to let you go on a path down the west side of town, a city street that was laid out 100 years ago just cannot accommodate this. So I encourage you to vote no.
Thank you. Gail Fox.
I'm Gail Fox. I live at 1327 West River Drive. I've been there since 1985. I've enjoyed living there. It's a very comfortable, quiet neighborhood. We have traffic going in both directions. We park on both sides of the street. We have seniors that live there. We have young families that live there. We have the joggers from the high school and, and the other schools that come up into that area and jog. I don't have a problem in particular with a safety, safety measure. I am against this project because it would change the neighborhood. I don't believe that it would be just on West River Drive that, that the traffic would be flowing through there. I think it would be in, in the surrounding blocks as well. I do have sidewalks on my street. The other streets around us does not have sidewalks. We have many walkers, dog walkers. We have the bus stops that are stopping there. We have the city bus that stops there. I live right behind the mobile station. They have trucks that are parked there to make their deliveries. A lot of people stop there and run into the mobile station. I think it would be detrimental to our neighborhood to have this. We have the, the whole Mead Park over there. And for the most part, we don't really have a lot, a lot of traffic, with the exception of, of course, on 4th of July, which we all just enjoy anyway. But it would change the entire neighborhood if we were to, to encourage the increased traffic. And it would be an increase in traffic because it would be all of a sudden, a new place for, for the ATVs and UTVs to get from point A to point B. And we like, we like our neighborhoods to be what they are, single-family dwelling almost 100%. And I think that would just change that a great deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Matthew, and I can't make out the last name, but it looks like it ends in ski. What's your name, sir, again?
Matthew Pikarski.
Pikarski. P-I-C-K?
P-I-E-K-A-R-S-K-I.
K-A-R. Thank you. And for those who care, we're 24 seconds to halftime, tied up 14-14. For the record, I'm not one of those people who cares. Oh, then we're going to leave it alone.
Matthew Pikarski, 550 West River Drive. I'm here to speak against the long ATVs and UTVs on West River Drive. I am one of the people with small children. I guess my concern more isn't for safety of my small children, as I come from a northern community. Before I came down here, Tomahawk, which allows ATVs, UTVs on all city streets. I have in-laws who take my children for rides all the time and they do love it and enjoy it. My thing comes more from a peace and quiet of the area, as having small children, my only time of quiet insanity is once I get them to sleep in the evening hours, which from being in the northern community, I know is when the ATV, UTV traffic picks up a lot on those roads, moving around after dinners, everything else on weekends, weeknights. It is also not a safe road in the winter. On my end, which I am over by the dog park area or the Dog Beach area, the trees block the sun, it is icy. I have video from a few winters ago of a garbage truck trying to pick up garbage glands and sliding completely across the road due to the unkept nature and the packed down snow on it. The grade drops off immensely off of the road. There are areas where there's a good two or three inch section below the blacktop where if you slightly get off, you will be pulled down into the ditch area. We already have cars racing down out of town on that end, loud vehicles that come paring out of, piling out of the gravel area by where the Dog Beach is after doing, I'll just say, extracurricular activities late in the evening, racing out of there, loud duly exhaust, everything else. Right now, I have a three-month-old and it's great getting her to sleep with a loud truck or something with a blown-out muffler roaring down your street doing 50, 60 miles an hour. That is, I would have to say is that I am just against it from a noise perspective. It is an area of town that is also going to need more development in the future as the houses are aging, the population is trying to get younger. I am currently spending money to put on addition, which will go into the tax funds to pay for city expenses. The UTVs and stuff coming in from out of town are not paying to support that road or that section of the city at all. There have been new houses that have been developed along there and there is other areas along there that, like I say, will need rehab and people will be tentative to buy those houses if they are afraid of the noise levels, as younger people will be buying those houses. They are not giant four or five-bedroom houses. They are two and three-bedroom starter homes that you're going to have to put money into, much like we have over the last few years, to bring it up to livable conditions. So I'd just like you to consider that tonight before making any decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Chris Wirsba.
Hi. I live just off West River Drive of three houses. And I just feel this happening, ATV, UTVs is very unsafe. I'm on the south, south side, on the other, by the railroad tracks, so there's no sidewalks there. We already have a lot of people walking. We have a lot of people riding bicycles down that street. There's a lot of joggers that come from the school. And we have curves and rolling hills that make it hard to see. And if you're going to have a so-called small UTV down, it's hard to see them. Sometimes you really, it's, you don't see a car right of way. And I just feel it'd be very unsafe.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Barden.
Thank you for allowing me to address the board. Jennifer Barden, 6809 Sixth Street, Stevens Point. 20-year member of the Arnett Area Star Riders ATV, UTV, and snowmobile club, along with two years as a certified ATV, UTV instructor for the state of Wisconsin. I've heard a lot of concerns that people have brought up, so I just want to state some of the facts about actual riding of UTVs. And these do come right from the actual materials that we educate the individuals with. So one of the things that this route would actually allow is for the east-west connection along with the north and south trails, so that individuals are able to get from both sides of town, no matter where they live. The main reason for it is the fueling stations. A lot of people talked about the extra traffic on the roads. Well, if you're putting that UTV, which can be up to 3,000 pounds, also on a trailer, hauling it behind a vehicle, there's even more added if they're going down that same path that you're talking about. I know another thing that was concerned at the April meeting- I know another thing that was concerned at the April meeting was in regards to license and insurance. It's not enforceable. However, every single one of those units, every year, has to be registered. A portion of that registration does go to the gas tax. They fall under a different class. One thing to keep in mind is that a lot of those units, they are a $35,000, $40,000 unit. I know people that drive cars less than that, but they do have to have insurance because there is typically a loan out on those. However, you got a lot of people driving, they don't even have insurance on their cars that they're driving every day because they don't have loans on them. Another thing to keep in mind is that on UTVs, it is a 16-years age limit. You must be wearing a helmet if you are under the age of 18. If you're driving an ATV between the ages of 12 and 16, you can drive your own unit. However, you must possess that valid certification, Safety Course certificate, and have adult supervision at all times. One of the other things people talked about was the speed. So I'm not sure if all of you are aware of this. When you are within 100 feet of a pedestrian on one of these units, you are only allowed to go 10 miles per hour. Is everybody going to follow it? No. But if you've actually taken the course and you've done your homework and you're a safe individual that's out riding, that is what it is. As were, if you're an actual vehicle, you can be going the posted speed limit, be within three feet of an individual. Another concern I heard about was noise. So one of the legal requirements is it must be 96 decibels or less. If it's more than that, you can actually pick it up, be picked up by law enforcement, whether it's the Sheriff's Department or the DNR. I have other things, but I know that I got a three-minute timeline, so I appreciate it. And I vote you, I encourage you to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our speaker list is exhausted. Any additional comments from the older persons? Keep in mind, you get to comment when you vote. Alder Shore.
I'll comment any addition. Thank you, Mayor. So I am definitely a council member who, for other issues, very much uses the idea of city streets being, city streets are different from roads and highways. But in this case, I have to say that, for me, the consistent thing to do, and I'll explain why, is to support this. I very much understand the point about living here in a city, not in the country. But not every acre of this city is a city in the same way. I think we all know that, that at the edges of town, the city becomes less city. And I think that that's why an issue like this comes up. Another thing that will be consistent for me to support this is I've been through many issues where I hear nightmare scenarios, where there's kind of an overestimation or a lot of kind of worry about how bad it's going to be, and it doesn't tend to pan out that way. Some of these things, I ask you to bear in mind, it is transportation nights, so think about them for the next item as well. The idea of different users sharing the road resonates very strongly with me. I think a lot of the things that have just been said about ATV, UTV users sound real similar to things we've heard said about bike users. So maybe hold that thought. I understood that Aldous Lewinsky has put a lot of work into this. If it turns out that it's just going bar-to-bar, well, he made a mistake in what he chose to focus on, but I suspect he put more care into that. And in terms of being willing to live with something, my only defense, I guess I can make is, when I, for a long time, called for opening up overnight parking, my house right over there, basically the front of my house is a parking lot for people who work at the hospital. Finally, just, I am sorry to hear about the speeding. I'm always sorry to hear about the speeding. I'm sure that there's more that can be done for enforcement. It was described that there's only one spot. That sounds really important, so, you know, I'm totally sympathetic on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Aldous Lewinsky, did I see your hand?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I guess I want to start out by saying, you know, I do respect the concerns of the residents that spoke that live on West River Drive and also the other citizens of the I have to say, I think there's a misconception about ATV, UTV riders. I heard a lot of bouncing, going from one bar to another and using Stevens Point to cut through. I disagree with that completely. I'm a UTV owner and ATV owner. Mrs. Pliska, she hit it on the head. This is just another means of recreation for families. Now, are we going to have bad apples? There's bad apples everywhere, no matter what means of transportation it is. Bikes, motorcycles, vehicles, they're all over. But I just, I want to really, really hammer this, that this is not about a bunch of people running from bar-to-bar, getting drunk, driving as fast as they can, ripping up the neighborhoods. That's not what it is. I was up north last week, end of last week. I traveled through Tomahawk. I traveled through St. Germain. I traveled through Eagle River. Every one of those communities provide ATV, and I don't know if it's the entire communities. I know the individual that says Tomahawk does, but there was a lot of ATV, UTV traffic amongst the other traffic, and it flowed very well. I mean, I was going down county roads, and there was UTVs, ATVs, you know, they're traveling on the side, you know, but it flowed very well. I had no issues. I guess, I had stated this last Monday in our meeting, that, you know, this is an opportunity for another means of transportation and recreation for people. And this is a privilege for us. If we screw it up, we lose it. You know, so I would hope, you know, that the people that are using it, this passes, you know, they're going to respect this privilege and obey the laws and respect the other means of transportation. The noise complaint, I think that was dealt with, Jennifer brought that up, you know, regarding that, you know, especially at a 25 mile an hour speed limit, you know, I've heard motorcycles and trucks a lot lower than these UTV, ATVs. Let's see here. Again, the ATV, UTV laws, they're more restrictive than an automobile. You know, when we're within 100 feet of a pedestrian, we are supposed to go 10 miles an hour. Again, I just, I, let's give it a shot. I mean, all our surrounding communities, you're seeing communities all over, not only the state of Wisconsin, but I'm sure all over the country that are, you know, this means of recreation is booming, you know, and it's another way to allow our businesses for another opportunity for revenues and just another means of recreation for our citizens in our community. So I encourage this, the council, to, at least, let's give it a shot. And if these individuals abuse it, then we'll look at it within a year, which is in the ordinance, you know, and we can deal with it then. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Fischler and then Leek.
So over the weekend, I actually did some due diligence and went out and went the route myself and drove it. And it's actually, it's 25 on the, is it the south side of HH? And then drove the north side. It's actually, it's 25 through the more densely populated area and then 35 miles an hour, you know, to the north side, heading to the golf course in Rusties. And I don't know, I mean, just looking at it, it made sense to me that, you know, if we're going to give this a try, and I am, I'm not even an ATV-er or UTV-er, I want to make that very clear, but I am open to alternative forms of transportation. And this discussion does really remind me of bikes and bike lanes, so. I know some people don't find very much humor in that, but, but the thing is, I think if, you know, we're going to try this for a year, I actually spoke with a gentleman out on West River Drive, and it was on the north side. I just happened to see him outside, and he was probably very surprised to see me in his driveway. But I asked him, I said, "So what do you think about this, if we have people driving out here?" And he said, "Oh, people do it already." So, and I don't know if people are aware, I also did some researching because Portage County actually allows them on the county roads already. So I don't know if people are aware of that. That's already happening. So, you know, this isn't something brand-new. That was actually approved back in January of 2021. So I just wanted to let people know that, in case you weren't aware. And again, I'm very much in favor of alternate forms of transportation, whether that's bikes, walking, and, you know, ATVs or UTVs. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Leek.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate actually what Ms. Jennifer Barton said about the ATVs and UTVs typically being insured, but my understanding is not a, it's not a requirement that we can impose on them, nor is it a requirement of the state of Wisconsin. And so I understand that typically, that's great, that's reassuring, but I still, I think I'm going to have to oppose it because of the lack of insurance requirements.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Dalton.
Thank you. I hope that my colleagues here appreciate this evening, the amount of response that this really has garnered from residents. West River Drive really is the backbone of the west side, which already often feels neglected and underappreciated as a part of the city. But I do also walk, bike, jog, drive it all seasons of the year, and hearing and speaking with many of the residents who more intimately experience that road on a daily basis. I really do trust and wish to represent tonight their perspective on this. So while I feel that there is really a, like personally, that there is an opportunity for ATVs and UTVs to be incorporated as a recreational activity, I will not be supporting this tonight, and I do wish that you would also not support it. And I think we can come up with something that will work within our city limits and based on the response of the residents and property owners along that, that this for, this street in particular is not designed and not appropriate for this endeavor.
Thank you. Let's go to first-time speakers first, and I'll get back to you, Alder Fischler. Okay, Zarazua, then...
Nibon was up first, so it didn't matter.
Everybody's going to get their chance.
Sure.
I'll go with Alder Zarazua, and then President Johnson, did you have your hand up as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll go Zarazua, Johnson, Nibon.
Thank you. I, I do support this because it's another transportation option. In hearing all the concerns from people who live on West River Drive, I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't allow cars.
I was thinking the same thing.
I mean, if there are that many concerns about pedestrians and runners and walkers, I just wonder, you know, it sounds like cars are the issue. So I don't feel that ATVs are less dangerous than cars. I mean, there, there's a huge danger to the driver of an ATV hitting a person compared to in a car. So, I mean, we're laughing about the cars, but honestly, that's, I think that's more dangerous. I respect this as an idea, as a way to connect to the neighboring communities, and I think it does bring some value to the community in that people are coming into town to get gas, they're getting things at the gas station, they're going to, you know, the outlying restaurants, places that are available. I do think we have, like, we're simultaneously hearing tonight that people are not aware of choices that are made by council, but that also every ATV rider is going to know that they can ride down West River Drive. So I think we have to keep that in mind, too, that, you know, how many people are really going to be aware of this to take advantage of it? I appreciate that there's a sunset clause on it. I think that's important. We're not saying, here's what's going to happen and you're going to like it. We're saying, all of you, 102 houses on this area that are affected by it, you're all going to be watching. And those of you who don't approve of this are going to tell us all the things that are wrong with it. So we know that, and that that's something that we're going to reconsider. I think, too, keeping in mind, it doesn't mean it has to take a year. If there are concerns sooner, please reach out to us and let us know so that we can reevaluate sooner if need be. Thank you.
Thank you. President Johnson.
Thank you. I will be voting against the proposal. I did vote for the county highways as ATV routes, and probably Supervisor Madine voted along with me in support of that, primarily because county roads have a much different shoulder system than West River Drive. And, and I won't ride my bike on West River Drive because it is rather narrow, curvy, and hilly. I'll, I'll take the west-side loop just to avoid going down West River Drive, although once in a while, I like to do it because there's some beautiful homes and very lovely gardens that I enjoy. So my vote isn't about, I've, I've been an ATV driver, I've enjoyed it, I've had a lot of fun, I think it is a great sport. It's all of those things. I think responsible drivers, they're awesome, just like responsible bicyclists and responsible motorcyclists. Motorcyclists that have Harley-Davidsons with loud mufflers are not responsible. So, but this is more about the street design. West River Drive doesn't have the same sort of shoulder system that our county highway system has. There's a distinct difference between a Class A, Class B, and a Class C road. And West River Drive is, in my opinion, based upon my knowledge of the area, based upon the information, again, that Supervisor Madine and I got at county board, I voted in support of county roads being used for ATVs because I do believe in multimodal transportation. I can't support West River Drive in that respect, with all due respect.
Thank you. Alder Nibon.
Well, I did not support this the first time it came around, and I didn't support it last week either, and I'm not going to support it tonight. ATVs are not designed to be driven on roadways. It's that simple. They're not that safe on trails. And I'll be willing to grant you that some ATV drivers are very responsible and some are not, as there are across all kinds of transportation. And as long as we're talking about opening up the roads to alternative forms of transportation, can I drive my riding lawnmower down to Aldi with my cart and get groceries? Can the little girls that have the battery-powered car next door, that's an alternative mode of transportation? Shall we open up my street to allow those types of transportation? I don't think so. I think we've heard enough from the people that live on that street that they don't want it. We've heard that it's not designed for this. People are used to seeing ATVs in Tomahawk and St. Germain and Monaca and Rhinelander. It's part of the call of the North Woods. There's 1,800 miles of ATV trails in Wisconsin in the fall, summer, and spring, and in the winter, it jumps to 4,200 miles. That's according to the state cartographer. I don't think we need two more miles of West River Drive to add to the ATV routes in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? Alder Morrow.
I think it kind of boils down to what the residents of that area want. I don't think that, I mean, as it goes down to like, I mean, we've always said this before about bike lanes, too. The folks in my area didn't want it, so that was the well of the people in my area. I don't, I, I actually do not think that ATV riders are like trying to go from bar-to-bar-to-bar and with license and so on, because folks who have cars don't always have a license, don't always end up having insurance, and so on. I think it just based, basically boils down to, I mean, we should abide by what the, what like the residents of that area want, and if that's, and if this is what they also want, and they have those, they have those, they have those concerns, I think that we should try to follow that.
Yes.
Yes. Call the North Woods.
Okay. Anyone else for the first time?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. Alder Fischler.
I was just curious if there's maybe any way to compromise. So the people to the south of HH seem to be the most vocal about not wanting this in their area, and they do understand that if it's a really densely populated area, it's something new. What about if we would be able to propose something to the north side, where there's a parking lot over there by the river, you know, there's the, it takes you to Rusties, the golf course, and the people on that side don't seem to be as concerned about it? Would there be room for a compromise?
And I'm probably speaking out of turn here, but the answer is always yes.
Yes.
However, I can tell you that this is significantly changed from the last proposal. The last proposal had routes in various parts of outside the community, coming inside of the community, Berluski Road to get to Fleet Farm to get fuel and groceries. There was one on the east side, north side, Highway 66 to get in. This was an attempt, I believe, at that sort of compromise. Let's test it and see how things work. If it fails miserably, like some people think, we can stop it immediately. If it doesn't, we can carry it on and we'll review it at the very least. review it, at the very least, after a year. We can review it sooner, but at the very least, as proposed, we would review it after a year. If it works, we could choose to continue it, or expand it, or disseminate or dispel it completely. Turn it down, stop it. So this, I believe, was an attempt at a compromise to kind of run a test. Okay. Everybody's had their chance to speak. We have had extensive public input. This is exactly what we love to see. We need to hear your opinions. The motion before you is to allow the test at West River Drive for a period not to exceed one year with a review after that. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow.
No.
Fischler.
Aye.
Dalton.
No.
Leek.
No.
Niebone.
No.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
No.
Shore.
Aye.
We have four six. The motion fails. Okay. Now, the fun one. Item number 14, to accept the recommended alternative for Business 51 as presented by AECOM, so they may proceed to the 30% design phase. Normally, we would require a motion, but we have an extensive list. We're two hours into the meeting already, so I'm just going to go through this list first, and allow people to speak, and then we will seek consideration. So, we're gonna start with the people online. Lawrence, now is your time to shine, buddy.
Okay, what do you think? My name is Lawrence Levitin, and I live at 826 Sioux-Murray Avenue. I've been a resident of Stevens Point for 32 years. I regularly use three modes of transportation, the car, bicycle, and walking. I live on the east side of town, close to Stanley Street, where I do use the bike lanes, and find the reduced speed and turn lanes a big improvement over the previous four-lane configuration. I appreciate how it encourages a reduction in speed, especially after getting off the highway. It kind of funnels you into a lower speed. It also feels much safer to cross as a pedestrian. I cross Division Street multiple times a week. Division is difficult to cross by foot or on a bike. Unless you're at a stoplight at Fourth Avenue or Maria, you often have to dart across four lanes of traffic. The street feels much too crowded, and is made even more congested by snowdrifts in the winter. Walking to Belt, you can feel the backwash of wind in your face as cars often pass by just a few feet away from you. The posted speed limit often feels arbitrary with cars speeding past. University students, many of whom park on city streets west of campus, have to carefully navigate across or trust that the flashing lights in front of the Y will work and compel drivers to stop. I have, on several occasions, witnessed drivers stop in one lane while the driver in another lane plows through. This is an accident waiting to happen. I am in favor of the new road design. I have read all of the studies presented here. They have cited the use of reduced lanes in other cities with quantifiable evidence that the reduced speeds, more efficient use of the road, fewer lanes for pedestrians to cross, and increased green space buffers on the boulevard will make it a safer and more pleasing central thoroughfare through town, while allowing for the special needs of emergency vehicles and large trucks. I had a recent experience with a lane reduction in the village of Los Rancho in Albuquerque. I have family there and have traveled that road, Fourth Street, which is actually the old Route 66 many times. On a road which is a much busier corridor than Division, the new roadway with reduced speeds, fewer lanes, landscape medians, and sidewalks is a revelation, changing what was a four-lane racetrack into something much more livable and welcoming. And I got to my destination on time. Again, I support this project. I plan on enjoying the aesthetics of the new design while safely getting to my destination, whether it's in a car or other mode of transportation. And I will plan on using the new bike lanes north and south of the central segment. Thank you, thank you for all of your thoughtful work that went into the project and clear examples of how it can improve this critical corridor in Stevens Point for the better, helping to make community and roadway more livable for locals and visitors alike. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. And that was like three minutes on the dot. So if you rehearsed that, you did spectacularly. If it just happened by coincidence, you did even better.
Is he using a metronome?
So next up, we have Janet Jorgelafin. Janet?
Thank you. Janet Jorgelafin, 4309 Pioneer Drive. I am in favor of the recommended alternative proposed by the city. Also, I'm a retired teacher and a lifelong resident of Stevens Point. Traffic does not flow smoothly along the Business 51 corridor if both lanes in one direction have motor vehicles traveling along them. There is constant jockeying for position and slowdowns as vehicles turn left and right. I have followed and supported the Business 51 Improvement Project from the beginning, and have been so impressed with the deliberate timeline that allowed multiple meetings and feedback sessions with stakeholders and the public. And I've attended all three public meetings by Zoom, as well as completed comment forums along the way, knowing how important all the feedback is. At this point, there's no reason for not understanding exactly what the improvement project involves and why. The city's virtual reality videos puts the viewer in the driver's seat as we navigate all three segments of the imagined revamped Business 51 corridor, and shows how smoothly bike and car traffic will flow. As far as I know, though, I think it's only on public meeting number two page where you can see those virtual reality videos. If this is so, they should be brought to the forefront, because everyone needs to see for themselves how the Business 51 reconstruction will work for the betterment of motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians. For now, you can go to the city's Business 51 Improvement Project webpage and click on public meeting number two link to watch these awesome virtual reality drive-along-the-new-Business-51 videos. Thank you to the Public Works and Community Development Departments for your forward thinking in making this key corridor and our community better for us citizens and for those who visit Stevens Point. I ask the common council members to vote to accept the recommended alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. And that exhausts the Zoom people that had signed up, so I will move to in-person. Dave Madine.
I'll pass.
Pass. Thank you. Eric Olson?
I know he's here. I saw him earlier.
Probably in the overflow room, so we're just gonna wait a little bit.
In the overflow, sorry.
We got it. We're on it.
Eric Olson again, 2025 West River Drive. Thank you again for having this public input time. I guess I'd do a couple of things, just to revisit history again. Not many people may realize this, but most of Business 51 used to be the only way, really, to get from Chicago, Madison, Milwaukee, up north into the rest of Wisconsin, Wausau. So we really had a highway that came right through town. It was basically Highway 51. We built a four-lane divided freeway east of the city to relieve a lot of that traffic, to sort of take the congestion out of downtown, just like we built a reroute of Highway 10 north of the city going west. We are now grappling with, what do we do with these roads that were left with us? These aren't, right now, they don't have the traffic level that they used to have. And yet they have pavement that needs to be plowed and maintained? It's my understanding that the pavement here that we're talking about is sort of at the end of its useful life. So we have to figure out, what are we gonna do here? It doesn't make sense, in my mind, to rebuild a highway as though there isn't I-39, to rebuild it as wide as it is right now with four lanes of traffic through the whole place. Because myself, younger people, are gonna be saddled with the cost of maintaining and keeping up that road. This is our chance to right-size our roads. We're gonna have also chances, I understand, to deal with Highway 10 coming through downtown. Right now, it's ridiculously overbuilt. We need to right-size these roads, and this is the start of that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Kevin Flatoff. And could we get the at-home camera, can you zoom in on the speakers just a little bit more, please, when they're speaking, so that the folks at home are watching the video can get a better view?
Hey, before you start the clock, Mayor, do used car salesmen get an extra three minutes? You know, I like to talk.
No, sir.
I did get a haircut. I bought new digs for this, just so you know. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody that I talked to on the phone. I reached out to most of you. Kevin Flatoff, owner of Flatoff's Gold Key Motors, Stevens Point, South Side. My main concern, I can read off this, but I'm not. My main concern is with this, is that road diets kill small businesses. The purpose of a road diet is to reduce traffic. Any business relies on a high-traffic count to survive. So you're gonna take away a large part of my customer base with this road diet. How can Plover get it so right with four lanes? And Stevens Point get it so wrong with a two-lane bottleneck? Just doesn't make sense. You had a survey on the city website, Business 51 Travelers, and how many believe in lane reductions, believe lane reductions would have negative traffic impacts? The answer was 85 to 90%. Why are we even having this conversation on a two-lane road? A lot of AECOMs plan, actually, almost all of it, doesn't address small business at all. You're taking 56 driveways away from businesses, 56 entranceways away from us. There is nothing addresses, look at the whole map on this, please, from the north to south side. There's no consideration for any small businesses here. What you're doing by, my main, my main worry is, by reducing traffic, half my customer base is gonna disappear. Alderman Melissa Johnson mentioned on TV the other day, well, they're gonna be driving slower, and they'll be able to see your business. That's one of the arguments for a road diet. Well, when you're taking half my customers, Alderman, what's the difference? Because you're taking half my customer base with a road diet. Business 51 is way too busy for a road diet, okay? I need you to think about that. I drove through there today, from my south side business to the north side, Second Street Auto Clinic, I own that. Peak hour is 5:00. Road diet's not gonna work. There's too much traffic, and the flow is nice the way it is. So, we need to kill this. We need to kill the road diet, because you're gonna kill a lot of small businesses. Last thing we need is vacant lots in the city of Stevens Point, and that's what we're gonna have. Since I have a forum, this will go to referendum if it gets voted down. And you know, everybody knows where I'm at. I'm at Gold Key Motors, and I'll be, I'll be heading that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Falk. Robin Falk?
She's in the other room.
That's okay. We'll wait. I don't wanna go outside in the rain, anyway.
Did it? Well, I'm gonna quit, too.
I wanted to not speak, but against.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay, no problem.
So she said she was against?
So Robin Falk is against the proposal for item number 14. John Kenoke?
My name's John Kenoke. I live at 1809 Michigan Avenue, and I rode my bike here. But I did not drive down the bicycle lanes. And I wrote on the very top of my page to stay calm, and I apologize to Mike for losing my cool in his office last week. But I could not be more upset. The whole south side business community is upset. In the last two weeks, I spoke with almost all the business owners. I walked up and down Church Street. I spoke with between 25 and 30 owners and employees. Do you know how many of them knew that there was a vote tonight? Not one. Zero. A vote to move forward with this concept tonight, or without the input or consideration from the south side business community is shocking. It's actually arrogant. To close all these driveways is a business killer. This whole concept is a business killer. I own a strip mall on the corner of Church and Pat Street, and this will kill my strip mall. To block direct access to my parking lot, to make my customers go from a different property on both sides of my parking lot to get into my parking lot? Insane. This would be a detriment to all the businesses in my strip mall. If your goal is to slow down traffic, it will work, because traffic will find someplace else to go. To funnel all what Whiting and Plover has done down to single lanes is not right. This needs to be voted down tonight. A new plan needs to be reworked for the south side, and you must consider the people of the south side that make a living off this street. I spoke with two prominent real estate agents today, and you guys are all gonna know their names. I'm not gonna say their names. They said that this will definitely hurt the south side commercial business properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter Leppen?
Mr. Mayor?
Are we having order in this meeting? You did say at the beginning that...
Walter Leppen. You're up.
Excuse me.
I didn't want to interrupt. I'm against this vote on this Business 51 project. It's been, it's been, it was a terrible proposal, 14, and they kept working on. You hired the same company, you go again, and now you go road diet. You're losing driveways, like Kevin said, and you're gonna hurt business flow. And if you want to slow traffic down, why don't you put your police force out there and enforce the laws? You can stand out in front of my place at the auto exchange, if you had a radar gun out there, I'll guarantee you, 50% of the cars are doing 35 to 40 miles an hour. You have an accident issues? That's why. Lack of enforcement of what you already have in laws. There's a couple, some real fine safety points in your, your plan, but they're all involved taking away businesses that pay your taxpayers, and employees that work there. What else, everyone, you know, speeding, and limiting access, like taking away the driveways from my, my business will limit my traffic. And in fact, if you look at the thing, if you're going south on Business 51, the way they have it right now, you will not be able to turn into my business. That would basically, and what you're gonna do is lower the property values of all that business property. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Jack, right? Yes. Oh, that was Walter. I'm sorry, Jack. Jack is up next. Jack Leifus. I know he's here. We talked earlier. Probably an overflow.
Thank you. My name's Jack Leifus. I own the Hardees on 3132 Church Street. I'd like to know what this vote is for. I understand it's 30% of the project. Can somebody explain that to me? Does that mean it's only 30% completed, or?
It is not yet 30% completed. The council is gonna provide direction to our engineers to get to that 30% mark.
And then what happens?
Then we'll likely go to 31%, then 35, 40, and so on.
Are any changes possible once this vote is taken?
Yes.
Okay. I'm concerned that you're taking away an exit for my business. My drive-through exit is to be eliminated. I'm concerned that my business is done. You said that you could drive a car out of my drive-through and cut across to go to Quick Trip. That's private property. On Saturdays, right now, they have flea markets. They line their flea market right up from one end to the other. I can't go through there. What do you propose?
I would go through your indoor. You have one driveway, you go around and in.
So you're admitting that my drive-through is not going to be able to operate. Thank you very much. That's not acceptable. I sent a letter to Amy Canfield. I copied Scott Bodine. I showed you that letter. Now what happens? Are they gonna come and say, hey, Jack, I agree with you. You need to be able to use that. Or are they gonna say, you're screwed? I think I know the answer based on what I'm hearing. I can't accept this, guys. I just can't. And I know a lot of business people are saying the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe Fonte.
Mayor.
Joe Fonte is up.
Can we control the group, please?
As we look at, of course, in Plover, as Kevin also brought up, we have four lanes there. We're looking at a plan to go to two lanes. And as we look at it, if you think about when you're on the interstate, at a point where you go from two lanes down to one, what happens? And that bottleneck, that does occur. That certainly is not something that people want to go through. They're gonna try to avoid these areas. You know, there certainly was a reason why Plover went to the four lanes. I love biking. Stevens Point has a lot of great areas for biking, but frankly, to go on Church Street is not the area to go for biking. There's certainly a lot better places to go than on Church Street. You know, we look at as to closing of businesses, you know, certainly there are cities that have went from four to two lanes. Los Angeles had an area that was a little less than eight tenths of a mile. There were 22 businesses that closed down as a result of going from four to two lanes. What happened then? The city decided, we have to go back to having four lanes. You know, we certainly always have to weigh competing interests. As we look at competing interest, you look at, of course, these businesses. You look at the impact upon the taxpayer, and the burden, of course, by property values going down, the extra load that other people will have to have. And we have to weigh that against biking. There's a lot better places, as I said, to go biking. I am opposed to the proposed Church Street project. We should certainly keep it four lanes. I know this is not a popular thing, but if somebody certainly needed to ride a bike, frankly, I'd ride a bike on the sidewalk. I love biking, as I said even this weekend. I respectfully request that the alderpersons vote no to this proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mayor's Kim.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, please.
Actually, sir, you're out of order, just as much as those people clapping.
This does not seem...
They're enthusiastic about their decisions and their discussion...